This is the work session of the American Council of the city of Disney County of Cochise and state of Arizona. To be held on Monday, April 22nd, 2019, if needed, starting at 5:30 PM each night at the City Hall building at 9:15 South Octoberville Road, Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Coronado, would you call the role please?
Councilmember Gabe Lindstrom is excused, Councilmember Joni Giacamino is excused, Councilmember Bill Higgins,
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith,
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johnson,
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hanson,
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Anna Klein, city staff Stephen Pocken, interim city manager Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Alberti Chavez, police chief, George Castillo, fire chief.
All right, the signaling of business is the budget, and with that, I will turn this over to our inner city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, everyone. We are prepared to present over the next few nights what we have in terms of a draft for the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget. As in the grand tradition that some things don't change, it looks like we're going to use the same format we used when I worked here before, so at least you're using a format that I'm familiar with. And but some of the some of the issues and items on the budget obviously are much different from the one I was using up. So I just want you to know in advance that most of the preparation has been done by staff other than myself. And I won't claim to be 100% up to speed on it, but where it matters, hopefully, I'm up to speed with what's going on as far as the numbers are concerned. So I'm going to defer much of the conversation to Carrie this evening because she has been living with it for as long as. And so I think basically what we're putting forward is similar to budgets that have been adopted by council for many, many years. They typically do the best job they can to provide you with a comprehensive look at where the revenues come from and where the expenditures go. And when you get down to the end of the general fund, as is typical for many, many years, there's usually a nominal amount in there in contingency to make sure that we have contingencies covered in the event something occurs that we don't anticipate happening in the future. I can tell you from my previous tenure here that there's a wide variety of different opinions as to whether or not we should budget to use a fund balance. And my position always was and continues to be that because the state law requires us to adopt a tentative budget, which by law fixes the amount you can spend, you don't want to lay that too close to the exact dollar. You want to have a nominal amount of money there for, like I said, contingencies, unexpected circumstances, or opportunities that may occur. So and then other than that, I think that we're just going to be prepared to go through here. As I think you've gotten used to previous budget sessions, we're going to go through these things to the degree of detail that you want to go through. Some ones obviously won't require a whole lot of detailed discussion, other ones will. We're going to start tonight with Fund 54, which is the wastewater fund. As I indicated to you last Tuesday night, we decided to do this first because we're fresh. And, you know, we haven't run out by 16 of them yet, and this one tends to be the most complicated. And actually, the one probably most often talked about, not just in the last couple of years, but for many years running, I can remember. Having just the plan was just finished being built when I started working here in 06, and then we had to figure out how to pay for it. And you've made changes to the way we pay for it since that time, too. So it's an ever-evolving fund and needs a level of attention necessary to make sure that people are satisfied that what they're doing is transparent as we can provide it to you. The second thing we're going to go through tonight is the tourism fund, not because it's complicated or even a large amount of money, but because decisions have been made with that fund that impact the fact that, quite frankly, it will not balance without a little renovation, I hope. And so we do want to discuss that tonight because that's a serious thing we need to discuss. And then after we've done those two, then we'll just kind of move back to page one, we'll start going through it, and we'll go as long as you all want to go to see the meetings and then tomorrow night. Just one note of interest, I was actually trying to get out of here by noon on Thursday. I've got to be at CER Vista at 10 o'clock, and then I was hoping to head to Winslow for the weekend, so I would prefer not to meet on Thursday night if we can wait. So it's a pretty rare one, we've had to go four nights in a row in my memory. So anyway, starting now with the wastewater fund, you want to walk through that real briefly? This will, like I said, we'll do the revenues. Please interrupt if you have a question when you have it, it's easier if you have it.
So yeah, I don't know if you can't hear me. The wastewater revenues haven't really changed at all from previous years. It's the city sales taxes, the 1.8% tax that we get from city sales parks for user fees, and the use of fund balance, 1.1. That's to help the fund balance. If we didn't have to record the depreciation expense, the fund would actually cut enough revenues to cover its expenses, but we need to record that. So and then it kind of cancels itself out since we're not spending the money, they just kind of offset each other. The salaries is to pay for three.
I have a couple of questions on the revenue. The loans that we have now to pay off wastewater, we should have an excess of $550,000. Where is is that spread across general funds, or where is that?
When we get to the page 41, you're going to see a couple of the last entries there. There's a transfer to debt service wastewater, 625,000.
Right.
Okay, that's your that's your your payment on wastewater debt as it has been refinanced.
Right.
Okay.
But it was normally 100 or over a million, wasn't it, the last payment we had to make? So that money is in excess, so is it is is it just in the general fund?
Well, nothing goes to that does go to the general fund. You have spent it throughout your personnel and wastewater expenses.
Okay, okay.
Okay. And then just to finish that thought, the next item down is transferred to reserves, 16,120. You have a reserve requirement to refinance, and that's what that number represents.
Let me ask, let me ask a very, the new account user fee, new account fees, that's a setup fee?
Yeah, it's a $20 setup fee for new accounts.
So we're looking at 600 new accounts?
Yeah, we get about 30.
Okay. All right, and this is something we haven't been charging.
Right, and since now we're setting up a lot, a lot more than anyone has, I should say. Before, we would just keep the same account number on the property and just keep transferring it over to people now, and giving the account and opening up a new account number for people. And also giving that for rentals, which we didn't do before.
Right, and I was asking some of these so that it is understood by people not necessarily either in the room right now that are questioning some of these, so thank you.
So the salaries is to pay for three people in collections, right now there's two, but there is a vacancy, so this would pay for the three collections people. And also a little bit that's allocated to the fund for public works admin and public works director.
How much of the public works director are we going to be charging?
It's 25%.
Sure.
And we can we can change those. Right now it's allocated between street wastewater, sanitation, and public work. I know we almost did. So the only big change here with the operational expenses was the $750,000 for contract services, and that's for the contract with Jacobs. Most of the other operational expenses should have seen a decrease, and Jacobs covers the cost of operating the plant. The other operational expenses would be for collections.
How many people do we have in collection?
Two currently, but there's budget differences. And then the 26,931 interest expense, account number 4330. I need to do a little more research on that, it's the amortization of the debt refinancing interest. And I'm not sure if the amount that was put here, if it's over the life of the loan, or if it should have been finished last year, so this is a little bit of a figure.
So in other words, the figure that's in there for the next fiscal year, I think it's 26,000 and change. If that particular fee that was charged in refinancing was only a one-time charge, then that will go away and the figure for fiscal year 20 will become zero.
Okay, let me, I'm sorry, are we on the next page?
We can do whatever you want to do.
Why do you want to jump around too much? That's people. Equipment repair and maintenance pursuant to the contract with Jacobs, we have $75,000 in there this first year, is, does that roll over, or is this an additional 95, or?
It doesn't really roll over, it's a new amount that they didn't spend.
And where do we get the 95?
I think it was just in a amount that they thought that they would need for more pumps.
Okay, so this came from Jacobs, from?
No, this would have come from public works, and Dwayne did work on this a little bit before he left, and so this would be an amount that he came up with.
The reason I bring that up is they've been authorized with that $75,000 to expend, what was it, Steve, 40 round numbers that we talked to them about?
That's correct, yeah, then you're talking about Jacobs.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And and so I'm wondering if they need that 95. All I'm saying is I think we should be in contact with them to say, what do you anticipate you're going to need next year? Because it may be far less than this 95, based on the fact that they've just purchased some stuff that they felt that they needed that will, that they want to plan.
Okay, but at the same time, we may want to take another look at the equipment repair and maintenance line for collections as well, since I, you know, we just recently had emergency repairs on a pump and then a replacement pump that we recently purchased. And those were far in excess of $10,000 we have there. So those numbers may transpose a little bit, too, based on what we heard from Jacobs. So we'll check on both of those.
Good.
What's the the repair and maintenance of the?
Other?
Yes, it's about two-thirds way down the age, $5,000, we spent $6,000 this year.
I think I'll need to check what they spent that on, because a lot of times it ends up being like pumps and things like that.
Well, the pumps that we were talking about, is that?
Well, I mean, it's, these are always good questions because sometimes I ask them and nobody knows. And sometimes it turns out that maybe we can make one and just combine it into another, but sometimes they have a specific reason that the people in wastewater will say, oh, yeah, that's the line of use for this. Sometimes we'll leave it alone, sometimes we'll change it. It, you know, it's probably survived a good number of years for a particular reason, but I'm just wondering, too, if there's anybody left that works here who can go.
Yeah.
So anyway, we will ask that question, and we'll either leave it as is, or we'll change it depending on the response. But this would definitely be for collections.
And the bad debt, can you talk a little bit about debt? I'm, that's, I also want to hear about that a little.
The amount that we record as user fees is basically what we expect to collect when somebody home whose house has been sewn built. It's our receivable amount. We, of course, don't always collect all of that, a lot of it gets written off. Like, for example, we found a lot of homes recently that have been vacant, the owners are deceased, nobody's claimed the property, and yet we continue to build for that. So we have to write it off, so that's the bad debt. It's amounts that we recognized as thought we'd not work and receive receivables, or we won't keep receiving it.
Well, the good news is it's gone down.
Well, too. Well, it has because we've collected a lot of the outstanding.
That 250,000 is basically a projection, okay.
The problem is that those are bad, I mean, how long, how high is up situation? Because you don't know if that receivable is bad until you are in collection and you find out that that house hasn't been hooked up in 40 years. And so you don't, you just don't know, and so you've got to estimate.
Yeah, some, I mean, some are obvious, like a few years ago with the Lockins debt on the Moore Hotel. That was obvious because that was an ongoing controversy, if you will, between owner of the building and the city. Some of these are just minor shacks on the hillside that nobody's paid attention to for years. So as we discover them, and there's no reason, at least in my opinion, to go fucking down the hill looking for things like this, but if we find them, then we deal with them, and this is the way we do it.
Anything else?
Permits and licenses, that, if you could just explain that in return, there looks like a big difference on 8,000 to 18,000, right above from that 250,000, they're just.
Okay, yeah, permits and licenses are obviously the fees that the city pays to ADQ and other regulatory agencies for our annual licenses. It, it looks like we've only spent $8,000 here a day, but we still got, now this is a federality number, so it's highly likely we'll see more fees prior to the end of the year. We're at the mercy of the state legislature in most cases with regards to those things, because as we all know from our previous experience, they'll come up with a bill maybe next week that imposes another fee on the city, and it happens to be in wastewater. If it does, it looks like we've had some cushion in the past. Your 18 actual was about 15,000. It'll probably be right in that same category this year, because I haven't heard of any wastewater licenses fees that have increased either by the agency or by the state legislature. But the night is still young, as they say, until legislature adjourns after a hundred days, a week before we know what's going to happen. So I think 18 is a, if $2,000 less than last year, I think it's a reasonable number at this point. They'll take it to June 30th of next year.
Are we on the third page yet?
I can remember, by the way, not that many years ago, a renewal license for your aqua protection permit, which is the main permit for your wastewater plant, it's only $1,000. It was, it's gone up precipitously in the last five to six years. Because of, most of those things happened because the state government has adopted the general philosophy in the last 10 years that the departments will pay their own way, which means, of course, turn cities and towns. Go ahead.
How are you calculating the general fund internal services?
We took the total expense of all funds and then figured out, computed a percentage of each department, what their percent of that total was. And then we took the expense for all the, like, city manager, finance, clerk, those departments that kind of do things for the others, totaled those up and multiplied by 5% for each department, and that's.
So it's the same way that we did last year?
Right, and but we put it for all departments this time, instead of the ones that were just small now, we just put everybody's percentage in there.
Anything else?
Okay, before we move away from wastewater, now, Mr. Mayor,
Yes.
because it is, it's been a point in some conversations over the last few months, I guess, longer than I've been here, you know, there has been some indication that there was some one cent sales tax back in 1972 that was supposed to be going to the wastewater department. I did agree to check into it a little bit, although I did also caution the requester that I was probably, if I really wanted to dig down deep enough, I was going to need a research assistant from the U of A to really to really burrow down to day one of the city of Winslow, or at least processing wastewater.
Bisbee.
I'm sorry, did I say Winslow? Okay, well, just don't fight me, I'm only here.
We're going to put a fine.
I'm only here, I'm on a quick standup now.
We'll all be 50 cents, I don't know, y'all.
Oh, wow, you guys are really, I can't say it now. There were two ordinances that our research staff, I need the clerk's office and the finance office, have resurrected from the microfiche files, which were thankfully saved. And there is an ordinance 071-14 and a companion ordinance 073-12. And both of these ordinances fixed the sales tax rate at 2%, okay? And they fixed it at 2% for for any purpose due necessary by council, which don't worry about that, carry by those. The, but the important thing about these ordinances is that both of them also have a repeal clause in them, as ordinances typically do, which repeals anything that was done prior to this date, okay? So even if something was done in 1972, or in 1962, or 1902, it was repealed by council action with these with these ordinances. And like I say, one was adopted in '71, the other one was adopted in '73. I'm not sure whether this is clear and convincing, but it is important information. It's also, as you know, you currently collect 3.5, and we know that the half set is to the funding we just discussed. And the one that says what the holders approved for your streets and infrastructure program that you're currently doing, which has a sunset date somewhere through where you're going to run. So that really accounts for it. I have also, just for information, I have also put in a request, and it was required to put in a request by email to the Department of Revenue to do a little bit of research. They told me to wait two weeks for a response, it's only been one. We'll see if we get a response or not. Depending on the response I get, I may prevail on one of Curie's friends at DOR to try and give him the door verbally to see if there's any other research that they can do for us above and beyond. But they do actually have a research department there, and that's slowly getting.
And sir, could you give me the ordinances then?
Yes, ordinance 71-14, which was adopted on 16 November, 1971, and signed by Mayor Lazovich. And then the other one is ordinance O-73-12, passed by council on 16 October, '73, and signed by Mayor John P. Stich, S-T-I-C-H-T. I didn't know.
May I ask you to provide that basic same information at your manager's report at the next meeting?
You bet.
So we can make sure that that be on the agenda.
We'll put that on the city manager's report for the council.
Thank you, sir.
And I have one other question. Did you get a chance to look into the special election in 1994? Do you want to do with this?
Not relevant, no.
Okay.
The 1994, if I recall, I didn't bring that paperwork over here, had to do with determining whether or not it was, we would use user fees, is that?
That's right.
Okay, so that wasn't about a sales tax, that was about the use of user fees.
Okay.
So technically, legally, those are unrelated.
Okay.
So, but thanks goes to the staff because they found this, there was no small tax to find. So hopefully, I don't know that that nails it once and for all, but at least it provides an important distinction where the taxes are legally allowed to go. Okay, next item that we would like to discuss is, what do we call it this year?
Visitor Center.
Still called Visitor Center?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to discuss this one because we're in kind of a dynamic situation right now, trying to hire somebody, and so.
Is that your community development?
No, it's one way.
It's a computer, then just the visitor center.
It's suspicious.
Okay, now, have they or they not?
Has anyone found it yet?
Well, it's fun twice. Well, it's fun twice, but, you know, one ten is most of it.
It's third.
Page thirty.
Third. Wasn't that far from where we were?
We got all these pretty statues, and they're saying it's page thirty. Okay, so if I understand the recent history of this particular department halfway accurately, and I think I got it halfway. The position of tourism director was re-renewed with a new job description and a new salary range. My understanding is that that was done, at least in part, with input from the I Visi Committee. And so we have a brand-new job description with a brand-new, a, a, a brand-new salary range.
And let me, if I, let me interrupt you.
Go ahead.
Because you're, you're right, but there's more to the story.
Okay.
There was a job description and salary range. The council approved a second job description and salary range, but they have not chosen which one of those they want for that position. Does that make sense?
Okay, that, that, that will be very important.
Yes, yes, that's why, I wanted to make sure that you were aware of that.
Okay, because on the basis of the new salary range, we have advertised a position, and we have received applications, and we have conducted interviews. All of the people who we have interviewed have been interviewed with the understanding that the new salary range is the range, okay? So that's where we are with that. At the same time, the sunset on bed tax has caused next year's number, which you see there at fifteen thousand dollars, that figure's wrong, okay, that number is zero, okay? So your revenue for what we're calling the visitor center is a hundred and fifty thousand seven sixty-one. Now, because.
When is the bed tax going up, I'm sorry?
It expired March first.
Expired?
Yeah, it's, we're done.
So can we do another proposal for the, the bed tax this year, or do we have to wait?
It has to be a general.
To wait for a general.
Um, the state legislature.
To wait for next year.
Next year.
Their infinite wisdom, the state legislature two years ago passed a bill. You know, they've transcribed everything into the even number years, including municipal elections, which didn't affect you, but it affected almost everyone else in the state, except those of us who have a charter. The, in their infinite wisdom, they decided to add tax issues to the mix. So in twenty twenty, you're gonna be voting for a president of the United States, all federal, all state offices that are up, all local offices that are up, all tax issues that are up, all judges that are up, everything that's up by the time people get down to considering our bed tax, they will probably have tighter vote.
Well, hopefully, they'll just say yes.
Unless we can convince our, convince our constituents to start at the back and vote. So now, I I don't know that we should be concerned, or, or not, whether or not that's gonna pass, because that's a tax that we levy on visitors, okay? And it's obviously, and I think it's pretty generally assumed that it's doing good for the community by having it there. But basically, until the first of twenty twenty-one, we don't have any. So, so we have to budget this whole fiscal year without it. We have, the salary figure that we have put in there is the midpoint of new salary range, okay? As I've indicated, we have done interviews. We have identified an individual that we would like to have vetted for this position in the very near future. And until I can make an offer to somebody, I really can't discuss wages benefits. So I'm kind of in a box here, you know?
Yeah, my question is, okay, so for that, on the bed tax, it's just that one percent, the additional, correct?
Right, the, the additional, right.
Okay, and so on the books, we still have the director position that was just approved, and we still have the visitor center manager, which, so we still have both, so we can go either way.
My understanding is that both are still happening.
So does it need to come before us to decide which one we're gonna do?
Yes.
Well, it will, since you approved both job descriptions, I mean, staff has been working on the basis of, we're gonna hire this person based on the new, and, and the, the old position, if you will, the former position would be la faite. That's the premise under which we're operating right now. So what that leaves us with, if you back out the thirteen thousand dollars in bed tax that we're not gonna collect in the next fiscal year, essentially, the way Carrie's got this put together, we'd be thirteen thousand dollars in the hole in this, in this particular fund. Now, apparently, we have a contract with thirteen thousand dollars with the museum, is that correct, the museum? To have a part-time person. I don't know if that item is expendable, bring it back to balance, or if you want to, the only other option we have is to, because we can't strip out advertising, you know, this is, the advertising numbers are pretty much what we're told we need to spend to, to get our share of the AOT money, Arizona Office of Tourism. So that's kind of a fixed number, the only other way out to balance this would be to make a transfer for the job. That would be the only other way. Now, that's not a decision that has to be made tonight, okay? In fact, I'm not making decisions tonight. But in order to make this come balance, which we know we have to do, we're gonna have to do something different than what we've already done. So, questions?
No, I, I would, not questions, I would try to think this out, that if we were to, just as an example, approve this, this budget, then by that approval, we're indicating that the hire will be under these circumstances. And so I, I do not believe that we have to have an agenda item saying that we want this or that, because the budget will dictate which way we are going.
I would, okay, now, if council gives us direction to use the old salary range and the old job description, then we're gonna have to start advertising the job already. Because I can't offer the job to somebody one way and then say, oh, we didn't mean it. You know, this is really.
Why don't you take fifty percent?
So would we have to, I mean, if you're talking about the salary at the mid-range, why couldn't we just go at the low end?
Well, that depends on whether or not we can get the qualified individual to have that figure, whether or not that person would accept the job at that figure or not. And I don't know the answer to that. We usually plug bit points in here, because until we do negotiations, we really don't know. Now, are we gonna start at this figure? I, I don't wanna say, because it's a public deed. But we'll start negotiations at some other figure.
And also, part of the argument is getting the qualified person in here, that they're going to be bringing enough revenue in here to cover that.
And I can tell you that the person, the person that we've identified for further vetting, probably would not be interested in the job at the old job description and salary range, based on his credentials and his experience. So kind of a touchstone here. But we would love to continue moving forward.
Well, and it would be nice to have, you know, a director, but, I mean, I see a visitor center manager that would work just as well.
Yeah, and I don't know what historical basis or what comparisons were used for where you ended up with this. I know that the salary range would exceed anything else we have in Cochise County, except the A B C R register. So, I mean, just knowing what they are around the area and who they are. In fact, I have one of them apply for this job. So, I mean, okay, so we're talking about thirteen thousand dollars here, okay? If you wanna just bring it down to our dollars, we're talking about thirteen thousand dollars here. In grand scheme of things, that doesn't seem like much, but what do you really wanna do? Just, you know, we will need to know fairly soon, because we'd like to do some further vetting. And like you say, that doesn't have to be tonight, but.
Well, it can't be tonight.
Certainly, if you wanna make an item of discussion at the next council meeting, we could do that, too.
I would suggest that we do that, because we can't make decisions tonight.
I think it's already done.
I think so, too.
Okay, I really, really wanted you guys to know that tonight, because that's an issue we, we have to resolve. All right, any other questions on visitor center? Okay, in that case, we'll go back to the beginning. And we'll start with the general fund revenue cap. As you can see, general fundings do not differ significantly from prior years. I will make note of the fact that on page two, in the transfer section, we are proposing use of reserves of three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars of change. As we discussed about fifteen minutes ago, that's a number that, while it also helps us balance our budget, it's not necessarily something that we would use. And as you can see from your historical data on your budget document, it does not appear that you've used in the last two and a half years that you've used reserves at all, okay? So that tells me that you've spent prudently in the general fund anyway over the last couple of years, and, and that it hasn't become necessary. You know, the thing is with budgeting, you know, we try to use the best information we have available for every single line item. You know, we don't know for sure what we're gonna spend on anything. So as it usually turns out, usually turns, turns out that we just actually spend less. So it's not a failure or a success on anybody's part. It's just that we've spent prudently enough that it wasn't necessary. And when you don't use reserves, then that generally means that next year you end up with a little bit more in reserves, and that's a good thing. So your reserve balance, I, I would not consider extremely healthy, but we've had years when it's been worse, twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, it's never there. So really, what you've been doing the last few years has been good for the overall health of your general fund. I'll, Carrie will let it to you, any questions?
Yeah, I wanna make sure that we're understood that when we're looking at year-to-date, we're looking at two-thirds of the year, correct?
Yeah.
We still have four months of, of collection, and so when we're, we're looking at this proposed sixteen hundred dollars city sales tax for next year, in fact, that's not the jump that it appears to be at this particular point, because we still have.
And we're about a month behind also, so.
Yeah, we're, we're taxed, we're concerned, you can assume that we're a month or two behind with the L R.
Right, okay. So then I, I have a few questions. Plan to examine, we've got twelve thousand dollars here, and I'm wondering, it just seems like a pretty decent jump, although last year we exceeded that. But based on year-to-date, that's a.
I think the county has been collecting the, the fees for us, and when they send us, they just put it all in their building permits and splitting it out. So we just realized that when we have been putting it in, we just haven't been putting anything out on their building permits and not separating it out into what it should be. So we need to get a more detailed report from the county, so we can move on to the rest.
And then towing fees, that's a, a pretty big jump. Unless the chief's gonna get his people real busy downtown.
Yeah, towing's such a lot harder.
It, it is, it, it is. I'm just, historic, it isn't, historically, it's, it's not.
How many wrecks are you gonna have, how many hogs are we gonna have?
I, I agree.
That's, that's what my friend Elias would call budget justice.
Yeah. The franchise fees are, they're gonna go down, we think?
Yeah, it doesn't seem like we're getting as much, because we used to be from APS, they're, they were the ones that we had the larger amount on, and those have been declining. Just based on where we're in February, we figure two hundred thousand is where we want to go.
Okay.
Did they do a rate decrease here in the survey?
A decrease, yes.
Yeah, okay, just wondering.
Oh, yeah.
Because I saw a huge one up there, going down with forty cents.
Yeah. It's been more than that in the advertising, let us know if it looked that. Where are we on the ambulance fees? I see this, I, I'm gonna take where aren't we? Carrie, we, have we got that blow from, that was being revealed for Medicare?
I think we got it all up early in the beginning.
And is there any way for us to appeal to Medicare?
I'll have to check with Ambulance and, and see what was, what was unpaid and what we could do with that.
Well, it's my understanding that there, that Ambulance indicated there was a way to appeal. And I would, that could be a nice chunk change. I would really suggest we look at that and find out if we do have an appeal and, and do so. I, yeah, just, okay, when we, we keep having this one-point-two figure, and it appears to some that we're balancing the ledger on the backs of the firefighters, and that it becomes their fault, or that people are blaming them if all of a sudden they're not coming up with that one-point-two, and they don't have a darn thing to do about it. And we need to fully realize that because of the Douglas Hospital situation, that we're not getting the transports that we're getting. So I'm, I'm wondering if that one-point-two is a realistic figure.
Yeah, jumping on, on that, with the actual being in February and calculated the way Carrie told me how to do it, we would come up with nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars in revenue, which is still, even two hundred thousand dollars short. So I'm wondering if we should decrease that to one-point-one of one million?
We can, we can decrease it, it is a couple months behind, you know, the insurance companies are still unpaid.
Okay, so that's gonna actually go back to.
Yeah. So we can bump it down some.
Yeah, but, but do remember that I totally agree, the insurance companies are behind, but part of this revenue that we're looking at is based on them being behind last year and us collecting this year, which we didn't collect last year.
Well, we, we generally accrue that, and so when we, when we do the reverse accrual, that cancels out what we received in the, in the current year.
Okay, so we can say that this figure that we've got in front of us of collected ambulance fees to date is from January, I'm, I'm sorry, from July one on, okay, thank you. is from January, I'm sorry, from July one on, okay, thank you. And let's look at wildland fire services. Are we caught up on those buildings?
We did receive a payment for the two fires in Oregon.
Okay. I'm going to suggest that we look at increasing this. But I'd like to ask Chief Castillo, I want to make sure, what's the hourly rate on that tender?
I'd have to check the state contract on that because of the year and everything, but I believe it's going to be about anywhere from eighty to a hundred dollars an hour.
Okay, see, I thought it was even more than that for the tender, but you would... But that isn't...
Sure might be, it might be about one-twenty, but I'd have to, I know that we are just putting it on the contract here.
Okay, I was bringing it up because it's a piece of equipment that we can build that we haven't had before. And when you're talking about even a hundred dollars an hour over a two-week period, that's a few dollars.
We've been trying to get it ready, but we noticed the tank is full of rust right now. So, we had guys climbing in there to bang out the rust.
That's a little bit fun. Yeah.
Last little...
Well, I get it, I get it. And then, you know, just to throw a cliche out there, you know, how do you schedule public safety? I mean, we don't know what we're going to have in terms of fires, you know, to...
Well, we do, I totally agree with you. We do know, though, that with wildfire situation as it is, for whatever reason, we're going to be busier and our guys have the training and they're going to be busier. And that's why we started budgeting this because we're actually...
Of course, I was referring more to the ambulance runs.
I know, I know. And then the fire inspection fees. We're budgeting this and we're doing, we're not doing it. And I will say that part of this is defaulted with council in that we maybe not be pushing enough to get those fees structured in front of us for us to pass so that we can start charging for these fees. We're budgeting this for last year and wow, we're looking at budgeting again for something we don't even do. And we've got to, it's something that we've authorized the positions. We've done all of that, but we're waiting on establishing the fee. And we were doing that because we wanted to do all the fees together and make it one entry into the city code instead of all the other ones. But perhaps we need to reexamine that because we're losing money by not getting those out.
So, you think it might be better to look at fees individually for different parts of the city instead of just waiting and trying to do it all then?
Well, it sure hasn't helped us to date. This, I mean, we could have been making money in many different locations, but we're holding back because we wanted to do it all in one. And so, by not being ready, we're losing that money that we could have done by putting new mortgages as well.
Can I make a suggestion, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Perhaps once we adopt the Senate budget, which will be sometime next month, and we get a little bit of breathing space, perhaps we should have a work session specifically for that purpose and maybe it's just wildland fire fees or maybe it's a couple of other select fees that you feel a sense of urgency to update.
Right.
And then we can just tackle it that way and then we can, then we can have ordinance drafted, brought back to you for action and have it actually get done.
Okay, yeah, sewer is another area that we have fees that need to be raised. There's kind of a few areas.
So, you know, just pick two, maybe three areas that are really urgent to you and then let Carrie know what those are. And then we will schedule something once the Senate budget is adopted so that we can actually get the ball rolling. Because it won't take long, the trouble is, it's not a lot of work until you get started. Didn't start the thought part.
Yeah, it's, it's been kind of worked on for a year and a half now, so...
Yeah, I can see that.
Yes.
I wonder.
Yeah, and another line item here is soon we will be, and I believe by, it'll be operational certainly by July one, we'll be having the subscriber services at Banning Creek. As a matter of fact, we're getting inquiries now for other locations wanting to know if they can subscribe to our fire service.
So, one note, McNeil or something?
Yeah, well, yeah, that's why you asked you. But even if we just stick with Banning Creek, which the council's already approved, there will be revenue coming in to that. And I don't know how you want to, if you want to, the chief and I are going to be having a meeting with them and chief is in one or two weeks, in a couple of weeks. We'll be having a meeting with them in a couple of weeks. And I would think that at that particular time, we're going to have a better handle on how many want to jump in immediately. I know someone signed up that day. But a number of them are talking about waiting until July one to start it.
Yeah, does the subscription fee then...
It is.
So, we know how much the fee is?
It is.
Okay, so...
But, but it's something we can plug in because it's based on square footage.
Right, under roof.
Yes, sir.
Right, I was here for that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, do you think you'll have something that we can, because, I mean, we could create a charge for service in the budget? All we really need is a reasonable estimate of what you think that would be.
Well, I would suggest we put in a line item having to do with out-of-city services or whatever you guys want to call it. Because the, that would might be in place for the other charges the fire department's been collecting for responding to accidents, et cetera, outside of our city that we started charging for. That might be the place that we could also. The only, the only caveat to that is that we've discussed that the charge for these wildfire, wildland fire services need to go back to a line item in the fire department for equipment purchases. Saves us money on one side, but guarantees them money for the equipment purchases. So, we've got to create a debit along with it.
Sure, right. You put that in my department.
We could add a line in there for that and make it any four miles to the private, thirty thousand.
So, then we're good. Chief, does that sound like the right way to...
Yeah.
I have a question. Under the charges for services, number three is blank.
I don't know what happened there, something obviously got punched in the keyboard.
Thirty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-five.
I'll have to look, it is something in the building inspection or, I'll have to look and see which one it is. But I'll fix that.
Okay. I'm just curious as to what it was.
We've only expected a percent of it as a...
Whatever it is. Whatever it is, give us some more, we're not done.
Just getting a scratch every...
We could, we're probably going to be over, but...
Strike that for the record.
Now, when we go to service reimbursement for the fire department, what is that negative figure?
Library fees.
Item eleven oh two, eleven oh six two, second page, turn it down. I'm sorry, six four, eleven six.
Okay.
We've got a minus...
That was ambulance, sorry, out-of-city accidents that the fire department had gone through that we billed the insurance companies for and we accrued the revenue, but we haven't received it. So, we did a reverse accrual that made it a negative. So, we need to get back with those insurance companies that had another notice about those accidents.
Have we contemplated sending that to collections?
Yeah, we can send those to collections.
I mean, after like a ninety-day period of not receiving?
Yeah, we can add a...
They're weird, oh, okay, is that the thirty-seven-hundred?
The media. Right, about school, we saw something. I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who else? Anybody have questions?
Okay, if you, you know, if half an hour from now you see something that you didn't pick up, we can go back. Okay, Mayor Council, always a big one.
Yeah. It's all that money we got.
Yeah, 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 that's what I hear out there.
I guess I'm just wondering what subscriptions and dues are...
We were cities and towns, to be fair.
Yeah, most of that is reused.
Carrie, do we have to allocate fireworks to the fourth inch of lawn? Or is that allocated in June of this year?
No, that seven thousand, maybe see under seventeen, eighteen, somehow the fireworks for last year and this year ended up in the same year. So, it went like, instead of now you're thirty-five hundred in this year and actually, I think the bill came early for...
The fire union came and indicated they needed defense payment, that's how that happened. They did it like in June twenty-eighth or something, something.
So, if any of it, you're paid for it in your company?
We are, we are. There was the operational expenses, what I discussed with Ms. Coronado, she suggested it be raised. Just in case.
You guys hold your mayor manager luncheons, you hold different, different things that we have to supply, you know, drinks or snacks or something for, for different meetings or events that you go to.
I, that's what I was just saying. People said beer for the work sessions.
Strike that for the record.
Yes, yes.
All right, just a piece of...
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions on that?
If not, we'll move on to city manager.
Telephone and fax, what is that here?
For...
Cell phone is just on the telephone.
Ah.
Maybe we should rename that to cellphone.
Yeah, because we don't pay for telephones anymore thanks to the technology.
Yeah.
Communications equipment or something like that. Now, if you do that, every twenty-four thousand would have to change.
But we do pay for phones, just not as much.
Phone, yeah. Yeah, we're not getting a bill from West, whether they are now.
Okay, now, again, on this one, we took the direction that we received and put in maximum salary in the range that we were directed. And so, that and all the ERVs are based on that figure. Again, it's going to depend completely on what you end up with for the person you select and how their compensation package is negotiated, so.
That would be our thirteen thousand.
Huh?
That could be our thirteen thousand.
There you go, it could, you never know. But you won't know that until you pass the legislature. So, your choices are limited. But, you know, it could be less than we all hope for.
On operational expenses, three thousand, I know that the twenty-seventeen... We didn't spend any... No, we spent the twelve thousand in twenty-seventeen. All right, that was due mostly with fire, wasn't it?
No, it was mostly moving expenses.
Moving, okay.
So, we got a lot of moving expenses.
Okay, okay. Yeah, because twenty-sixteen, in seventeen and twenty-seventeen, eighteen, it's been between ten and twelve. They're going out and buying furniture every time we have a new furniture or something?
I got a new desk when I got hired, but it came from up, where are you going?
Yeah, we like him. I think he's...
I think he retired, I think he's on vacation now, too.
I'm just trying to figure out what a, a good number would be and I really don't have anything to base it on.
Other than three thousand?
Yeah, just because of the last two that we had expenditures were so high. One of them, I can understand, but the sixteen-seventeen was off the high, too.
Well, maybe what I could recommend, Joan, is maybe we could go back to the years I was here because they were more normal in terms of expenditures and see what a good figure might be from that. So, maybe we can go, we can take an old budget, get some numbers, which one do you have there?
I've got fifteen and sixteen.
No, no, no.
It goes back to fifteen, but that's probably not the show we're setting in the meeting. Well, actually, two thousand fifteen and sixteen was thirteen hundred dollars.
Uh-huh.
So, that's probably...
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely a fuzzy obvious budget, but I still see that it was a good one.
Okay.
Remember that some of the things that will be purchased are using insurance funds.
Right.
Those are still sitting there to purchase numerous items.
I thought that leaves all going towards the building. Or are there...
No, there's, there's equipment replacement in there, it's not over there.
Now, you know, some of, I guess this might be a good spot to talk about that. The, some of the money we've received has been expended mostly for demo work and putting that stuff around the building, those kinds of things. I think some of your friends have been very generous with you by donating a lot of the furniture that you have that you're sitting on right now. And so, not a whole bunch of money's been spent on equipment. I don't know, these two might know what specific equipment purchases there have been paid. There probably would have been some IT stuff because even though we saved the servers, all wiring and appliances that were put in were lost, along with a number of computers. So, I don't know where that money was spent from, but I think very little of that is actually spent with insurance proceeds.
Yeah, we did that a couple of times.
Now, and this is why I thought it would be good to bring up this discussion in connection with the fires and the insurance proceeds. Rarely does a day go by when somebody doesn't ask me what we did with the money. I mean, I'm still being asked what we did with the money when we sold it out for some reason, maybe, too. But, you know, we pretty much know that money's gone. And I think, and we will need some direction from council. Carrie and I have been talking about this and we think there needs to be a designator in the financial statements where that money can be easily identified.
I'm glad, we provided direction. I'm good. We, we, we provided direction to, to staff to do just that.
Okay, so what we'll need to do then, as we need to come to you with a recommendation at a future council meeting, uh, that you can adopt, that will be your direction to staff so that we, you know, cause I mean, I can find money, Carrie can find money, okay? I want public to be able to find money. And so, uh, we're going to find a place for it and then we'll get, it may require organs, I'm not sure yet. Uh, we'll talk a legal about that. Where we can part that money so that it's absolutely transparent. So, and we'll probably do that in the next council meeting, too.
Right.
Cause as you know, it doesn't show up in the budget.
Right.
Okay.
But hopefully, I don't want to be jumping ahead, but hopefully in the budget are places that allow us to spend that money.
Right. Well, that's going to be based on council direction.
Right.
So before we knock this budget, we can have that discussion.
Like if we are able to move forward and, and within that year start construction, we're going to have to have an avenue to be able to, to pay the people, so.
Oh, we, we have to pay them?
Yeah.
I have another question and I, I'm, I'm city manager. Wait a minute, are we still on council?
No.
No.
We were, I'm sitting.
Okay, yeah. Reimbursed ERE for this bus, I keep seeing that in all of the accounts or a lot of the different accounts. What is that? What is?
It's a time, well, the ADAP reimburses, um, the time spent on the bus.
Okay.
So we have a recorder of time that, you know, finance or, you know, whatever, or services, people garage and then, um, basically get reimbursed on the other one.
Okay, an indirect cost. Are we getting reimbursed?
Right. Finance.
So if you finance it, so that it reimbursed, it's a dedicated number?
Well, it's an expense, so it's kind of, um, reusing our expenses since it's an ERE. So it's all of our expenses are part of the.
Okay, okay, okay. Got it.
It's like a hell of a thing.
Let's not even go there.
Carrie, within our salaries here, um, how many, what, how, how many FT? FTEs do we have at Parkville? Do we have any?
One.
One FT?
Right.
That's great. Okay.
So we, we have it budgeted for five full-time and one part-time person and we put everyone vacancy, so.
And that's a full-time?
That's full-time.
In all fairness, I've been borrowing one for employees a lot lately for each other. So, cause we haven't begun to fill that particular.
Correct. So are we filling that?
Part-time?
No, the full-time.
Um, I, I don't know how many applicants you've seen.
Not, not very many at all.
I've been focused on other positions that have.
Yeah, maybe I, I'm, what's your full-time person?
Oh.
Have, have the advertised career?
The advertised, just on the city website and I think we received two applications, so maybe you'll look elsewhere if I have any.
And you were talking about personnel. Okay, yeah. Thank you.
And Carrie, for clarification, was that five full-time and one vacant full-time?
Um, it's budgeted for five full-time and of those five, one of those is currently vacant.
Okay, so, okay. And then we only have one part-time?
One part-time.
And we're. And that's all we're going to have in here is just one part-time, not two part-time?
No, it's, it's a sale, six, six people full of one, five full of one part-time.
Thank you. Under professional fees, um, we didn't budget anything for this year?
For the professional fees we were paying, um, well, our previous auditor to do our pension renewal case for us and our new auditors told us that my auditor paid them, they can do it for us since they have to spend the time double checking it anyway, so that they would be happy to go ahead and do that for us.
Nice.
Somebody cut us a break for a change.
Is that why the auditing and accounting, um, for this year is so much higher?
No, that was a longer contract.
Oh, okay.
And there was a, there was a, a built-in escrow.
Yeah, auditors are really good at that.
Well, you got auditing and accounting and then you've got the contract service.
Right.
So is that?
So the auditing and accounting is just, you know, for our auditors. The contract services is, is a few different things. We have to pay, um, the partner revenue, about twelve thousand a year to collect our taxes for us. And it's also like our express bill pay and, and our debt collections.
But isn't that, okay, no, 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 let's not even go there.
Are we looking at the credit card fees to jump or are we looking at more credit cards?
I was just having a safety net because we're, we're not sure at this point how much the online repay is going to increase it. I mean, the fees are supposed to be lower for the new company, but at the same time we're taking online payments, so I'm just a safety net.
Thank you.
And fees, fund management?
Uh, those are our bank fees, like, um, account analysis fees and all of our banking fees. And they actually decrease because our, um, cash balance and the main account covers most of those fees for us.
Okay.
As long as we keep our cash balance up, it will help cover those fees.
It's where the insurance money helps.
Yeah.
I wasn't going to bring that up.
Anything else? All right, so.
Okay, so you're good.
Contract services for the six thousand is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got a little plan.
Sure, that's fine. Um, I'm attempting once again to, um, purchase agenda management software.
Wait a minute, didn't we have a deals chief? I'll talk to you later. No, he doesn't.
He's a secretary.
It would be, we've, we've looked into Granicus, it's a population-based fee. It'll be under four thousand dollars for the year, which is quite a bit less than we were expecting even a year ago. That, that's what the increase is for.
Cause we don't want you to want us to buy that.
No, it was pulled from last year's budget.
Yeah. And it went to.
Oh, so that's.
It's okay.
That's right.
It's okay.
Now he remembers.
No more Mr. Nice Guy, just here, actually.
Well, hopefully we can purchase it this year. We're looking forward to it.
We need it. That's my only question on there.
You really have?
Well, I almost had a question, but it's looking through the line, so.
Okay. All right, uh, we need to open. Okay, um, I think this one, a couple of things I need to point out, um, here, one thing in particular, I guess. We, we are paying our contract services to the county, is that all? That's all that thirty thousand? Okay, uh, that's our planning services from the county. And I guess they administer a governor's minutes to for us. Twenty-five hundred dollars a month, that's less than the cost of one employee, so, um, I mean, I think that's a reasonable deal. The other item, um, and it's here, um, I know that we've had discussions with the county about the possibility of, of doing more work with them on animal control. Well, more, more the shelter, let's say, animal control. There was a request, uh, for a larger contribution, uh, from the friends, uh, made several weeks ago. And, and mayor, I didn't put that eighty thousand dollar figure in there. When I went to it, it was there, so I selected B. I think that, uh, you know, I, I think it's a judgment call whether you want to go into more detail with friends with regard to the contribution you make or not, that's, that's a, really, that's, that's, that's a direction call. It's not something that staff can say you're going to make.
Is our contract presently seventy?
Yes.
Thirty-five, thirty-five, right? And so this is a figure they asked for?
They didn't ask for a specific figure. In all fairness, I, I, I met with them several weeks ago and they did not ask for a specific figure, but they did ask if we could put more in budget for them. And whether this figure was a, a fat finger or whatever it was that was in there, so I just.
Okay, so that's something we can discuss.
And I don't know if there's anything else in community development that you all need to discuss at this point.
Is this the time to discuss it or?
It would be a wish.
Increase?
The increase of the animal shelter?
This would definitely be a time to discuss.
Okay, because I think it's safe to say, just from, I try to keep my thinking about somebody on the shelter and they have increased their capacity so much and they're full of bursting right now. And this is what happens when animal shelters improve their services. It's kind of, no, it really is.
Oh, I get it.
Yeah, this is, this is a known phenomenon. When animal shelters get better, people in surrounding communities, I mean, they learn this and they say, oh, well, the busy animal shelter is good. They'll place our animals, they'll take care of them, and then more people bring their animals in. And so they're getting huge shipments now of cats coming in and dogs and so they, they do need more help.
They're getting a lot from the borders.
Yeah, they're getting a lot from borders, they're getting a lot more animals from Douglas, they're getting a lot more animals from all around the county. They have done in talks with the county about building a new facility. And so I think, I think it would be good to get, you know, throw them as much money as we can at this point.
And I, and I totally agree. And my, my position, of course, is fairly clear with the president of the shelter, having been on their board of directors and such here. But I do want to also indicate that we're paying them for our busy animals, we're not paying them for Douglas. And we're not paying them to pick up in Chupac City or even in Napa. And they have a thrift store that they're, they're bringing in, uh, money off of to help subsidize that. They're doing a wonderful job. So don't take anything I'm, I'm saying as, as a, a negative thing, uh, because we do a great job. But I, I'm, I'm looking at this and we don't, number one, they're not current on the reports. And so I would like them to become current on the reports before I personally make a decision about, about that. I want to know how many animals I know they're bursting and, and, uh, but I want to be able to answer the questions that someone else is going to be asking me as to why we're giving them ten grand more. And so I, I want, I want those, those reports to be current. Uh, and also, um, little things like where's the cars that we provide them? Who's, who paid? What budget is that in?
That would be in this community development budget. It usually goes up there, um, you know, other expenses for the animal shelter.
Cause I could be wrong, Carrie, but I, I believe in, in negotiating that contract originally. I believe that that, that car wasn't, that vehicle wasn't even in that contract. And that's something that a, a prior public works director provided to them on his own without that being a contract issue. And that's worth a lot of money, particularly when we're paying the insurance on it and the maintenance on it and, and everything else that should be in the contract.
Do we know what the vehicle's being used for?
No, it's, I mean, it's, it's a Tahoe.
Tahoe.
It's being used to transport animals. I mean, it's being used to take them to the veterinarian, to pick them up and, and all kinds, I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's an excellent use for the vehicle. Uh, I'm just indicating that, um, when we're doing all this budget, we need to tighten this up and have a better, uh, a better package for somebody to, to look at. It's, it's, it seems a little loose to me right now. Uh, but the first thing I'd like to see is, I, we'd just like them to get curbed on their reports so that we, as a council, can act, answer those questions that someone else is asking us about, you're not putting this money into a pool, but you're putting it on the animals. What do we get out of that?
Okay. And they can probably use current reports and what we animal shelter can probably use current reports. And we can justify it, but, you know, in these rural areas, we all have to help each other. And when you have the animals coming from Douglas or Sarus to recent donations from the hospital to Sarus to, we send, you know, we have to ask other communities for help, too, and see why our animal shelter should be turning away people from other places. We've got to lift the whole county up where the county can see, we've got to save the country.
All of that's good as long as everybody understands that we're paying for that. And we've got people that have to, that are asking us, we just have to answer for that. Again, I'm not taking a position. I understand what you're saying. But if we ship somebody to a hospital in Douglas, Medicare or access, who's somebody paying them for that? We're not getting dollars by picking up a dog.
So, no.
That's all.
Okay. I, I just want to add to it. I agree with you and I, I think the shelter is doing a good job. But I agree with you that, I don't know, and it is hard because there are helpless animals. But I think we, I don't know, and I don't know how we can do it, and so maybe we should have a conversation soon on possibly capping, you know, animals that we bring in from the county or, I know there's some coming from like Double D and stuff like that. And I mean, I don't, I don't know, I don't know, we can get a special grant or something that might cover, you know, other areas or, but I, I do think we need help with it if we're going to continue doing that.
But they do get grants, Ms. Clem, that, that's not reflected here.
And they.
Right.
But they, they do get grants and they have their thrift store. Uh, I mean, so it's, the whole operation isn't being run off of just our funding. And so I'm, I'm not trying to be, um, what I'm saying, they're making money to take those dogs from Douglas, okay? I mean, we're not paying necessarily for those dogs, but we don't know what we're paying for or when we're not paying for if we don't have the reports that we were asking. So that, that's really what we're asking is, is, um, between the meal, the meal grants, fifteen grand a year, I think they get. And, uh, then the thrift store was, was bringing in sixty, uh, a year.
Yeah.
That much. But it's expensive. I mean, a better, but you take, you get the animal and it goes to the vet, it's a lot of money. And, and, I mean, there's lots of expenses associated with an animal shelter.
And as far as.
Your fees need to be raised, too. Well, that's, that, that's up to them. Uh, I don't know, it's, well, if they get fees, they, yeah, we don't get fees. They get the licenses, if they, if they sold more licenses.
So we need to look at current reports?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm just trying to get a to-do list here, find out what the car is being used for exactly.
No, I, I don't, I know what it's being used for.
Okay.
I want to, I want to make sure that it's tight in the upcoming contract with them, that there is a vehicle involved and, and in that. My last recollection is there's nothing in the contract about a vehicle that's provided to them.
Okay, so.
Is this contract coming up for renewal at some point?
Yes, July one. That's why they want the money is because it, it, we fixed it so it coincides with our budget here. That's why they want the money is because it, it, we fixed it so it coincides with our budget here.
Okay, now is that, is that contract for you an annual or?
It's annual.
Okay.
No, as far as the car is, just for us to make sure that it's included up in the contract.
Okay.
I just got one more question. Now, when an animal is taken in to do with that, do they just go anywhere or do they have a contract that they want them to vet or?
It, it depends on what needs to be done eventually. We have some vets that do the shots, et cetera. Our people here do a number of shots, et cetera. If it's an emergency, then it may go to a local vet here. Some emergencies are at different hours or on weekends when our local vet isn't available. And it would be taken to the emergency clinic at Dublin that's near Vista. So it, it, it depends. Some of the vets get better deals. The spay and neutering often is done free through the college, come, the veterinary college comes down here. I mean, that's, the shelter does, does a great job of engineering it, doing, putting all these things into play. So, but there's no hard and fast rule. They do not have a contract with a, with a vet because they don't have a vet that wants contracts.
If the other community's developing. Okay. Okay, you know, these are generally administrative expenses for city hall. Any administrative buildings, I think that's not assigned to some other department like wastewater sanitation. And as you can see here, most of these are utility bills and insurance payments.
But no rent.
And that's a good thing.
Well, is there a dollar here, Clem? Or do you expect them to pay now?
We're gonna take up a collection.
I'll get it this year. I'll get it.
What, what is the T one line? What, is that the, the central line that?
That's a line that's so long, do you?
It's zero.
It's zero?
Yeah, T one is a hack and sort.
Okay, so we just need to redo what the, what the line is.
Yeah, yeah. At this point, it can probably be removed ultimately.
Oh, we do see a little across, I was looking at the wrong line. Never mind.
So, yeah, that's, there's a lot, there's much better technology out there today. Here it is. In fact, I'm not even sure anybody offers it anymore.
That question just shows that's the reason that I get a professional to do that with mine.
Good thinking. So anyway, that's mostly what we, what we have here, insurance and utility payments. Maybe this is a good time to bring up something else that's been kind of bothering me since I, since I came back. For years and years and years, we've always had the same formula for how much of the health insurance premiums the city pays. My understanding is that hasn't changed. All the years I was here was the same as it is now. That's a, that's a good bit of time. We just got our renewal figures last week, I think on Thursday, from Sevis, not Sevis.
Seviz.
Yeah, Sevis is a different agency.
Oh.
Well, you know, I still, I, I still can't tell whether I can do this with this, so.
Okay, that's two.
No, I did that on purpose, Joe.
Okay.
And, and, and I know for a fact that sometimes employees in the lower salary ranges have to make decisions over whether they're going to insure their family or not. Okay, because we pay a hundred percent of the employee's premium and nothing for dependents. I think any little bit that we could, and I realize I'm talking to you after presenting a budget that uses reserves to balance itself, okay? But sometimes it's better than that. And, and I'm not saying we should do it all at once, so maybe it would be better to do it in increments. But when I started working here in two thousand six, a family plan was probably about fifty percent of what we're paying today. Don't quote me on that, I didn't check, but it's considerably, considerably higher. And we all know that in most of our individual cases, our insurance premiums have done the same thing over a period of thirteen, fourteen, fifteen years. If we could defray even a small part of the dependent costs. And I know one of the arguments in the past was, well, if I'm getting single coverage and, you know, somebody's got a spouse that they're covering and they can pay for that, then I'm, I'm getting cheated. I don't believe that to be the case, okay? And I've never heard any busy employees that I've known through the years believe that to be the case. You know, I'm hopeful that with all of the discussion that appears to become, becoming more legitimate at the national level dealing with what I consider a very real problem, maybe we'll see some federal or some state legislation coming down the pipe. It won't be this year. It will only next year, we know that. If anything happens at all, it won't happen until twenty twenty-one or later. But, you know, even if we could put a hundred or two a month against dependent coverages, which, you know, if someone has a spouse and children, that, that's more than double what the single coverage costs. So if we put a hundred or two hundred a month against that dependent coverage, or even if we tiered it to be one thing for spouse, one other, something else for spouse and children or, or just children if there's no spouse involved, I, I think that would go a long way to boost our employment route. I mean, you know, when you, you know, when your paycheck is six hundred and fifty dollars and three hundred, and it's paying your spouse a coverage, I mean, that's, to me, that's just.
Instead of a figure, how about us exploring that percentage? Because that's going to be more, more equitable if it's a spouse or if it's spouse and children or whatever you're making a percentage.
Yeah, and, you know, at, at some point, we could put those, I mean, we haven't formally told them which plan we're going to accept, but we're going formally, it's going to be the one that gives us the best deal.
And what, what difference from this year is that?
It's minimal.
Two. It's less than three percent, I think, is that?
It's rather get it written.
So, the United Health went up quite a bit. Look, they did come back with several, three other companies that we could go in and that was on the list now. So, United Health went from five seven to four ninety-three months to five ninety-eight months. I'm sorry.
The one best deal was.
Yeah, the best deal was Blue Cross.
Just a minute, Allison. They have to get a safety chart. No, I'm, I, they usually do mine, I'll be here, so.
So, Blue Cross was five one seven fifty-four a month versus United Health, which went up to five ninety-eight a month.
And that's, that's coverage for?
That's for a single.
That's single coverage.
So, for, for a family plan, forty plus house, United Health went up to one thousand three hundred and ninety-eight a month. And under Blue Cross, it's one thousand nine hundred and sixty a month. For children, the United Health went up to one thousand eight seven twenty-five a month versus Blue Cross, which was one thousand two a month. So, it's.
So we're not saving money, but we're, our, the, the amount extra that we're going to pay is going to be done.
Right, right. Oh, yeah, so.
We don't want you to think we're saving money.
Oh, no, no. But I, I think that we owe that to our employees, so, I mean, it's, it's terrible with someone that has a physician that, you know, am I going to need or am I going to have health insurance for my spouse and children?
We're, I totally agree, we're not going to be able to put them in that.
Oh, I understand that, but, you know.
Allison, you have, you wanted to say something?
Thank you, just, I'm the vice chair of the employee council and I just wanted to, thank you, Mr. Pocken, for bringing that up. Before the personnel director, his last meeting of employee council before he left to pick her up mayor. He actually brought this before employee council. It was, it wasn't a move forward, but he brought the statistics from Abey City in Cochise County. We're the only city who does not pay a portion of spouse or children. And there's other statistics and documentation, I think, that Hina would have, that Dan did some work on this. And I just wanted to present that to you, that there, that some of that work has been done. And that his main point, Dan's point, was that as an employer, to look desirable as an employer, to be the only city that doesn't offer that. That's all.
Thank you, thanks, Allison. So can we, can we ask for, assuming that the council is going to take a little bit of the Blue Cross, can, assuming that, can we get a, a figure, Carrie, of, let's say, ten percent? Because we can then extrapolate on ten percent if, if it wanted to be more or less or, or whatever. Ten percent, what does it cost us annually?
Right now, there's only about ten employees that are actually in the plan where they're covering their spouse or children, most likely because of the cost. So it's hard to say how many people would sign up, but I can try to come up with some kind of reminder.
Yeah, it would be very hard, I see the issue.
But we know it's happening.
Yeah, well, it's, it's something that, and I, and I can see where in those kind of cases, if you provided a lot of some monthly W D, for budget reasons, easier to figure out for sure. It's just, but it wouldn't be as equitable for the employee, I don't think. So, as long as we're talking about insurance, let me bring up the health reimbursement again this, this year. Here we are, we've, we budgeted quite ten, ten seven fifty again. And we've, have spent thirteen sixty-eight. Last year, we could see that we, thirteen eighty-seven. We're budgeting this money. The good news is we're not spending it, but the bad news is we could be spending it on health benefits for our, our employees that they can actually use. So I'd like to see if we can take this ten grand here and work that into something for the employees to actually put in their pocket towards their medical insurance.
What is the, the health reimbursement?
Five hundred dollars, we pay the first five hundred dollars.
Oh, it's, it's.
Deductible.
Okay.
And the point is, is, is nobody takes advantage of it.
Yeah.
This is, this is basically, at, at the max, three employees.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's do something with that.
Taking advantage of that. And this is, we've done it for a couple of years and it's been the same. I argued against putting it in last year. As, as a matter of fact, we brought it down, but anyway, it's just not being used. And I'd love to see it in our pocket.
Well, I think that, you know, doing something that could give us a lot of work with our, with our employees. It, it, by the way, it does play a small part in recruitment process.
Question.
So, we have to take that into consideration as well. Okay, administration and general government, anything else, folks? Okay, moving on to personnel or some kind of, who is HR? I think we're still personnel because that's what it says in the city charter. And that's the only reason. But that's what it says in the city charter. Because I think when I was here, I was going to propose changing the title of that job. And I was reminded by the personnel director at the time that hers was a position in the charter that we couldn't change. So there we are. A little bit of useless knowledge to talk about cocktail parties. We haven't really made a lot of effort to fill this position so far. I've had some very capable assistants from one of Carrie's employees. She's been nice enough not to complain about it.
Which one, her or Carrie?
Neither one, actually. Actually, I think she kind of likes what she's doing. So that's a decision that, you know, recruitment will be able to defer in the meantime. Because quite frankly, the help is more valuable right now in getting these other positions filled. So, and focusing on that and, and having someone capable to do all the myriad things that need to be done in recruitment process been very helpful. It was one of my expeditions coming back to help out was knowing, there was an HR director. So she has filled the void very capably at this point. However, when we do, we do have all of this in place, mirrors very closely probably more of what's been happening historically than what has happened most recently in terms of your salary benefits and that. So I'm, I'm not here to speculate one way or the other, the salary that you have in place. But I think that the salary that we have proposed is quite adequate.
We've got telephone and fax down here.
Well, you know, we can get as many fax machines as you want.
I've, I've got some in storage that I can.
Why?
You'll sell them until you have.
They're worthless. I think that's what, that would be a good one. I'll buy faxes. Any questions regarding any of these items in the personnel? Okay. Okay, legal services, this is going to be a little bit of a wild card moving forward. I think there's merits, some discussion. It's obviously a very small number of animals, but it's a very big item for the city. From just talking with all of you over the last few weeks and what your hopes and dreams and aspirations are for legal services moving forward, you've pretty much mentioned everything possible. To me, we, you know, we have put out RFPs. I think we thought we were putting them in all right places. You would think that the Arizona bar would be a good place to request proposals. A friend of mine who is the senior municipal attorney for Best Rosenfeld, which is one of the largest firms in Arizona that does municipal work, I called her up because I didn't see anything from their firm. And she didn't. didn't see anything from their firm, and she didn't even want to reply. So she didn't know there was that. So, um, so I asked her, we, we did send her a proposal, which she decided not to respond to for a variety of reasons. Number one, meeting schedules tend to pile up on Tuesday nights, which makes personnel harder to deploy, but also the distance between here and there was a factor. So, um, I don't know, you know, the, the, the one that we got would appear based on the information we've got to be quite possibly maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars a year in costs. Obviously, that's not what we put in here. I think it's incumbent upon us as staff to meet with that firm to try and refine what they really need in charges, because they, they are perhaps making some assumptions that they're gonna need to do things that we don't need. You know, not, what size doesn't fit all.
And hers was out of play, though.
Theirs was strictly by the hour.
Yeah, yeah. It was out of play, so...
Now, the, the, the contract that we had in Winslow, the real Winslow, was, I want you fine, was, was flattering. So I know that's a possibility, but it's probably the more rare possibility because it's my experience with attorneys like Charlie by the hour. I, I can bring this up because for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, it might be a real possibility. It would be a consideration of having in-house attorney. We've had them probably as many years as we have in, in my recollection. And, um, and some of those years, we've had some good success with the attorneys that we have hired. We did have one done, okay? And he was, he was quite inexperienced, but I don't know if he's still practicing law, but he was, he's still. So we know, anytime we hire a boy, we can get good, better, different. So I think we have a responsibility to go to the firm that has provided us with a proposal and talk to them about refining what the cost might really be. And I'm gonna leave it to Council's direction if there's other alternatives you want us to explore. My, just, 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 in my opinion, we might wanna broaden our, our look a little bit. I think we'll have to pick up the pace talking with the one firm that has provided us with a proposal, but if we want to exercise the option to go out to hire an in-house attorney, I would say that probably would have to commence probably in a month sometime.
Have we, have we, we're, have we talked to Benson about their use of that firm?
I have not personally, but I do know that they're...
Yeah, I, I would suggest that we talk to Benson. I mean, they, they do Benson and Oral Valley, and there's no reason to talk to Oral Valley because they're totally different needs.
Well, since the city manager of Oral Valley is very different, aren't they?
Right, right, exactly. In any event, whatever, I would just suggest that we talk to people that are actually using them before we talk to them.
Okay.
Or in conjunction, talk to them.
That's, that's a reasonable option.
So what would be the process if we did want to hire an in-house attorney? Is that something that's after Bodom and the council meeting or...
You would, yes, you would, you would have to give us direction to start our recruitment process. City Attorney is one position that is, reports directly and serves the legislature council. So you would ultimately be the hiring entity in this particular case.
Thank you.
H O description, Melton.
The whole thing you do is two as you go through...
Much, much the same.
Okay.
We should have some...
We do, we got some old stuff hanging around.
There's a job description around here somewhere.
Absolutely.
Couldn't have changed very much.
Could I suggest that we go through, maybe, info systems and knock off for the night, come back tomorrow, police fire, I feel that...
You don't do, you don't wanna do the water system?
Oh, yeah, yes.
This is huge, it burns.
No, 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 no. I said through, I said through.
Oh, okay. Okay, I thought you said do.
No, no, no.
So did I.
I don't know, I didn't get excited, I don't know if you did, Joe.
I, I think if, if we can, Stephen, try to keep two more nights. I think we can do it two more nights, but a couple hours at a time. If we go past that, then we start getting a little...
Yeah, and the good news is, is I think we got most of the art stuff here. Okay, anything on water systems? They got big pumps up there, that's the reason for the fifteen thousand dollars. Other than that...
When they break, you gotta buy them.
You know, there is something that we probably, the pump house is part of the water system budget, and that, I'm sorry, but about seven or eight years ago, we put boards over the windows and painted great pictures, but it rains inside. And I think at some point, and we need to recognize that, if you set it down. So, uh, for one thing, we've got, uh, we've got a lot of antique fire equipment in there that's gotta be running out of us.
We've already got it set up with William and the city manager who was here.
Okay.
But it was pulled over.
Okay, so, I'll be, I'll be, by the way. We need to recognize that at some point. It doesn't necessarily have to be in the water systems, but, you know, it's something that we don't want to forget because that's a place that's too easy to forget. Information systems, it's actually slightly less than last year's budget.
And this is defense, we got the big company that we...
And the general, uh, transfer was, is different this year as well. But we're staying under budget with our professional fees.
Right.
I have a question. You said we got rid of the T1 line?
Yes.
But we have T1 line over here for five thousand.
That should go away. That should go away.
Oh, there, huh? We just, we just got five thousand dollars.
Is that, is that a zero or is there something else we're paying for in that line?
No, we don't have a T1 line at all anymore.
Okay, I'm just wondering if you're paying another bill, but is that...
See, that's kind of what I was talking about, of, of missing that after, after a while. Good catch there.
Yes. Anything else on this one? Okay.
Any questions? A motion and a second to recess until tomorrow at five thirty. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, we stand at recess.